Oh. Good evening, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Um. Roll call please. Oh, call to order and flag salute. We haven't been on the dais for awhile. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay. Now it's roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
And Councilmember Sonmore. We can't hear.
Sorry, um, I'm here attending remotely via teleconference, sorry about that.
That concludes roll call.
All right. Okay, so now, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
Thank you Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, I would like to just take the opportunity this evening to introduce our new finance director. She started last Wednesday and has been diving right in and is going to be a great fit for our team. So, Serke Salminian? Yes, so she joined our team and we're very happy to have her and to welcome her here to the Mount Lake Terrace Organization.
Welcome. Do we want her to say a few words?
She just flew back from Finland and has bronchitis. Um, if... Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so next is public comment. Do we have any?
No one has signed up in person, no one registered to give comments online, and no written comments were submitted.
All right, thank you. So then, we can move on to the consent calendar. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, moved to approve the consent calendar, items A and B.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I, did I hear Laura? Okay, all opposed? So that passes. And, next is proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, and who is going to be in charge of that?
Is it not on?
Thank you, okay, there we go. So, Venita Francisco with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, here to read the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 to October 15. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the Hispanic and Latino community and highlights its councilist achievements, and whereas this year, the Hispanic stars theme is to celebrate that with Latinos, everything is possible, and whereas the Latino presence in America spans centuries predating Spain's colonization that is now part of the United States, and Latinos have been an integral part in shaping our nation since the Revolutionary War, and whereas the American dream is not just possible, it's thriving with and for Latinos. They are generating more new businesses than any other group, achieving upward mobility and pursuing higher education at increasing rates, and whereas the Latinos communities' values are tied to uplifting their family and community, being resourceful and resilient and optimistic about the future, and whereas the largest and fastest growing minority group in the US, making up nearly 19% of the population, Latinos are shaping market trends, influencing politics, and enriching the American identity and their culture, and whereas this is the defining era for the Latinos in the US, it's a time to pave the way for the future generations. Let's be united, open the door for each other, and empower each other, and whereas September 15 to October 15 is recognized as Hispanic Heritage Month and provides an additional opportunity to honor the invaluable ways Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our common goals and celebrate their diverse cultures and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. Now therefore, Kioko Ma- um, Mayor Kioko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the City of Mount Lake Terrace Council, do hereby proclaim September 15 to October 15, 2024 as Hispanic Heritage Month. And we are honored to present the proclamation to Dr. Sally Guzman with Edmund School District. We do have an event.
Oh, yes.
Do you want to share about your thing? Okay, I brought your poster.
Thank you for having me. In the Edmund School District, our Latino and Hispanic students are our second highest demographic with over 20% of our students, so we appreciate you proclaiming this month Latino Hispanic Heritage Month. Our district also celebrates, and so on Friday, September 20th, we invite you to come and play a game of Lotería, and it's, everyone gets to play kind of a scenario, for those of you who don't know, Lotería is a form of bingo, it's just played a little differently. It'll be at College Place Middle School from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Can I hold it open?
Sure.
Curve in. Is that too wide?
In front of the curtain, not off to the side of the curtain.
Okay, so next is our proclamation for the welcoming week.
Is my light on? Mayor, city council, city staff, William Page, DEIC. Welcoming America, an organization that the City of Mount Lake Terrace joined this year, is a nonprofit leading a movement in this country of inclusive communities becoming more prosperous by ensuring everyone belongs, including immigrants. What they're doing is building a nation of neighbors. Tonight I get to talk about three of those neighbors. When Ellen and I moved to Mount Lake Terrace, April 3rd of 2020, the first neighbor that I am privileged to highlight tonight are those that live right behind us, the Stukos family from Russia, who because of a medical emergency couldn't join us tonight. The father, Peter, who tragically passed away July 5th unexpectedly, joined with his wife, Larissa, their eldest son Daniel, and his wife Jenny, and their two and a half-year-old son, Reuben. Also, there was a middle son, Reuben, who tragically, three years in December, was a victim of a random robbery and passed away at age 19. And last, there's their daughter, the youngest, Jenny. The moment we moved into our home, they were always present, asking if there's anything that we needed. Every week, me and the boys would get our blowers out, and they would help me push the leaves and pine cones out of my incredibly long driveway. When I was ill, they were there with flowers, fruit, or whatever they thought would be helpful, neighbors being neighbors. Right across the street from us, our other neighbor, Tavi Chong. She has lived in Mount Lake Terrace for 10 years. She's non-stop, always hard at work, but she finds the time to come across the street and chat with us to be a good neighbor. She brings over from her killer garden tomatoes, squash, and things I've never seen before, and some of the biggest green beans I've ever seen in my life. Did I mention that she has a killer garden? Have any of you ever seen a green bean this big? This is what I call a good neighbor green bean. Lastly, our new neighbor from India, Akila and Molly, and their two sons, Agastya and Adveeth, I know I'm working on that name. Though they've only been in Mount Lake Terrace for a year, they embody what new neighbors feel like, wanting to know what's going on in the neighborhood, and how can they contribute to the well-being of the city that they chose to live in, in any capacity that they're capable of. These neighbors are a small example of how immigrants in this city has enabled Mount Lake Terrace to become more prosperous when ensuring that everyone belongs. So I am honored to be able to read and present to you all from the mayor this proclamation. City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation, welcome week, September 13 through the 22nd. Where- whereas, Mount Lake Terrace's success depends on making sure that all community members feel welcome here, as they are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas, this during welcoming week, we celebrate the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together across the city and region. And whereas, during welcoming week, I invite all of our community to join this nationwide movement of renewing our commitment to our core American values, and by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our city, state, and country the kind of place where people from around the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas, regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are community, united in our efforts to build a stronger city. By recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and a growing economy, we make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And whereas, the Mount Lake Terrace Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission will host the city's first welcoming week event on September 21st to introduce the city, regional agencies, services, and programs to our newest community members and develop new relationships. And now therefore, I, Kioko Matsumoto Wright, Mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, on behalf of the city council, do hereby complain, hereby proclaim, September 13 through the 22nd, 2024 as welcoming week. Will you come forward? Come on, come on up here, get on up here.
Thank you all, and this is the first city I have been in US in the last 25 years that actually did the proclamation and welcoming, and this means a lot to my family. Thank you so much.
Okay. That was great. And so, we're going to move on to the review and vote on the T-Mobile wireless facility lease with our Recreation and Parks Director, Jeff Betts.
Well, good evening Mayor, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I'm Jeff Betts, the Recreation Parks Director for the city, and tonight's purpose is to review an amendment to the existing wireless facility lease for a tower that's located directly behind the police station. The original agreement for this wireless tower was signed in September of 2005, and it was with VoiceStreamPCS. That agreement provided for three extensions of five years each, and the final extension expires November 8th, 2025. T-Mobile has become the successor to that original VoiceStream agreement, and over the last year or so, the city has been going back and forth with T-Mobile about this request for an extension, and this would be via an amendment that's before you tonight, for 25 more years, or five renewal terms of five years each. So the new extension would take the agreement to November 8th, 2050. The current rent amount will continue forward and escalate 3% each year, which is the same as the current escalation in agreement. The rent amount for 2024 is $19,377.45, and that's typically paid in a lump sum amount each year. This lease extension assures the city of ongoing revenues for this site, and that contributes directly to the general fund. The leased area behind the police station that many people probably don't see, it includes a tower structure with equipment that's located on it for wireless communications. It also includes an equipment shelter, cabinets, meter boards, utilities, antennas, and other various equipment. So that the staff recommendation tonight is that the council vote on and authorize the city manager to sign this amendment between the city and T-Mobile West Tower LLC, and that's upon final city attorney approval as to form, as we're still working out a couple of details with the city attorney. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you Mayor, thank you for your work, I know it's been a long time coming, but I also feel we should make sure we ask the question, which is the 3% escalation each year, that's basically standard practice, is that the best way to think about that? I mean, it seems like 25 years from now, that might not be enough, or it might be way too much, but just curious.
Yeah, that's, that's actually what we built in for most of ours, I think it's either three, between three and five is pretty standard. This was the existing escalation is why we recommended moving forward with it, and it does seem to be pretty standard in most other wireless facilities we've seen.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, moved to adopt the T-Mobile West Tower LLC amendment to the agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the attached amendment upon final city attorney approval as to form.
Second. Thank you, there's a...
Discussion.
Are there any discussion? I don't see any, so we can move on. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all opposed? So this motion carries, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is the presentation on Diversity Equity Inclusion Strategic Plan with our Deputy City Manager, Carolyn Hope.
All right, good evening Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, glad to be with you tonight to talk about the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Strategic Plan. We started this process last year, and I wanted to provide an update as to where we are. So we'll give a little background on how we got to doing a strategic plan, staff engagement, planned community engagement, and the next steps. So back in 2020, the city council gave direction to staff to organize a DEI commission, many of whom you've just seen tonight, and some of the code requirements or suggestions for this group to be working on included identifying opportunities to address DEI issues, making our programs and processes more accessible to our community, ensuring equitable access to city services, and so forth. So these are all things that we wanted to investigate further through this planning process, and we will talk about that more as we go through the presentation. The other council direction that we have just settled on this year with the new city council goals are to make our community vibrant, which means that we are inclusive of our diverse community, fostering connections among those community members through responsible government, by maintaining transparency and responsible responsiveness in our decision-making, and through our informed and engaged community, making sure that we're reaching out to people throughout our community, not just folks who traditionally have been involved, but also finding ways to expand our reach into communities that have not been heard or involved in the past. And then through the environmental sustainability and resiliency goal, we want to make sure that we're protecting our vulnerable populations through, you know, environmental hazards and through climate impacts and other sort of disasters. So, back in the last budget cycle, the city council allocated some funding to the DEI commission, and that commission recommended to council last year to spend the money on a strategic plan to support their priorities and recommendations that they'll present to you, and also for some training. So the consultants were hired, and they've been working on gathering data, and that will take a little bit more time, but I wanted to give you some, a progress to date on that. So in January, we started with initial discovery with the DEI commission. In February, we launched a pulse poll of DEI-related issues with staff, and then the consultants reviewed key documents within the city to evaluate our policies and procedures related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The leadership team and several staff and council members were interviewed by the consultants, and we also launched citywide DEI training. So now we're analyzing that data, we've just developed and launched a public poll, and we're starting to plan for engagement with the community at large for the fall and through December. It may take longer, we're really working hard to reach different communities in that process. I wanted to give you a little update on some of the survey data and some of the high-level outcomes of the interviews that were performed earlier this year. So starting with the survey, just letting you know that the respondents, we had about 60, I forgot the number, 68 respondents, I believe, 64 respondents. And, most of those folks, so a lot of people didn't answer all the questions, although it was anonymous, I think we're still building trust with staff, and so we had a lot of folks who were relatively new, a kind of a balanced spread of people who are relatively new to the city and those who've been here awhile. And then we had more individual contributors than managers, of course, that's sort of how staff breaks out anyway, but also a lot of folks who didn't answer that question. We'll get into the survey data in just a moment, but I just wanted to give you some high-level outcomes that we saw through the interviews, and some of these themes also resonated in the survey as well that we gave to staff. So there was concern that our leaders are not adequately trained in DEI-related issues, that there's inconsistent application of policies, that there are oftentimes bias observed in customer service, that some of our programs aren't truly culturally relevant, including having stakeholder input, and that there's been attempts to improve equity, but that requires follow-through that doesn't always seem obvious to staff. So, from the survey, some of the high-level summary points are that people agree that DEI is important for a healthy workplace and a thriving community, that their work is meaningful, and that they feel like they can contribute towards DEI issues in their work, but they don't feel as supported in their work, generally speaking, and that they're, have abilities for advancement, and they're not sure that leadership is committed to DEI. When asked about services that we could improve as a city from a staff perspective, communications and engagement was number one. Also, safety, housing, food security, and affordability. When asked to dive deeper into some of those topics, especially related to communication and community engagement, we asked where more specifically could we improve that, so these were some of the results, that we should share more information about services with low-income households, provide more opportunities to build trust with the community, help residents understand how to participate in the civic process, and inform residents about how they can share feedback with staff and city council. Going to shift gears a little bit and just talk a little bit about the training, it all will tie together in the end. So we had two sets of training this spring. The first phase of training covered topics such as understanding key definitions related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We talked about how we are socialized as human beings and how that impacts our bias or implicit bias. We talked about race is a social construct, and that we needed to start breaking down and understanding what systematic racism and oppression are, and what those, what the history and the policies and practices are that result in the way we do business today. So we did a pretty good job of getting all of our staff, a lot of council members and commissioners to engage in the training. This is a picture of one of the sessions. And in phase, the phase two training, we really dove into what inclusive language and communication looks like and how that can also impact our leadership as individuals in the organization. So, just wanted to highlight again that right now we have an online poll, so we're starting our public engagement with this right now, and you can click on it through the DEI Commission's webpage, and we will be promoting that further, we have some social media posts out about it right now, and we'll be starting a more public campaign related to public engagement here shortly. related to public engagement here shortly. And right now, I'm in discussions with several community groups about pulling together workshops, small group discussions. And I will be scheduling a traditional open public meeting here at City Hall. I'll be talking with the library soon. I've organized the December Cops and Clergy to be at this topic, and we will be asking our fellow clergy members to bring some members of their congregation to the discussion. We've also been reaching out to some of our cultural, spiritual groups in town, like the mosque and some of the other churches who have sort of a more cultural following, like the Vietnamese-related churches and Hispanic churches, to see if they would have workshops. And we have our high school student on the commission, and we're hoping that we can work with some of the high school students as well. But I want to ask council if you have any connections in the community that you want to make sure are reached. Please let me know. I'd be happy to set up individual interviews and small group discussions, or even a workshop if it's a bigger group, and we can have breakout groups. So, happy to hear your ideas about that. So, this is just a milestone schedule, recapping where we've been and where we're going. I really want to make sure that the public engagement process is thorough. I'm hoping we can do it by the end of the year, but if we need a little more time, we'll give ourselves a little more time to do that. And after that, we'll start putting the plan together, talking with the DEI Staff Committee and the DEI Commission about how to prioritize the data that we gather and then present it to you all. So, that is all I have for you tonight, and happy to have any conversation or questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? Wow. Oh. Oh. Who's first? Right? Councilmember Murray and then Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be brief. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. I don't have any questions. I've had, I guess, the privilege of getting to hear and see some of this process as the council liaison to our DEI Commission. But I just want to say thank you for all of the work that you have done in leading that effort from a city staff perspective. And thank you to all of our DEI Commissioners who are doing amazing work and have been really integral in the process. And just, I'm excited to continue to move through the process and appreciate the intentionality, particularly around stakeholder engagement, recognizing, you know, we have a tentative timeline. And I think at the end of the day, taking a little extra time to make sure that we have reached as many folks as we can through this process and gotten the input that we intended to, I think is absolutely the right choice. I appreciate that. So, anyway, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. All right. Your turn.
Yeah, more comments from me, Mayor. I think Carolyn and everyone here, I'm really impressed that we're doing this. I think you highlighted some real, you know, some real key points there in terms of, you know, the barriers that, you know, the barriers that exist to a more inclusive and equitable sort of experience for many people in our community. And, you know, just thinking back over the last, you know, decade that I've been really involved with civics here in Mount Lake Terrace, I think we've coming a long way fairly quickly in the last few years, in large part to many of the people in this room. And I've really enjoyed, you know, sitting here on council and being a part of some of the, you know, often uncomfortable conversations, but also being a part of, you know, working with and engaging with our consultants and knowing that you as staff are doing this work and are, you know, going out there and, you know, doing the engagement so that, you know, or the type of things that will break down these barriers. And I think it is a long, slow process, but it's, you know, this plan and the work that you and others are doing is really commendable, and I think for a city our size and for, you know, yeah. For a city our size, this is really important work because we don't often prioritize or don't often resource this work well despite, you know, clear community calls to do these things. And I just, I'll wrap up by saying that I want to make sure that we as council and we as a community are, you know, continue to push this work forward because it does, it is needed. And I think, you know, especially with, you know, Mr. Page's proclamation reading earlier in the day, you know, while we might have really strong examples of community connection and sort of support for one another, there also are a lot of folks here who don't feel included and have real systemic and cultural and societal barriers keeping them from being better, you know, served by our community. So, just want to applaud you and encourage everyone to keep at this really important work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, you know, this has been a council priority for, or something we've been talking about and interested in pursuing for, what? Six years? Something like that now? So, I'm really excited to see us finally making some real progress and jumping in with both feet. It's exciting. I'm very interested in seeing what the strategic plan tells us we need to do, what kind of policies we need to change to be a more inclusive and equitable city. And I'm really excited about the engagement and reaching out and getting the communication side going with all cultural groups. And one of the couple of things, I'm pretty sure we're already planning on doing this, but we've, you didn't mention it specifically. So, I wanted to remind us to be following up with the high school, not only the high school, but the school district to help us identify at-risk and marginalized groups, children that, in particular, in helping us develop a plan to, for outreach and identifying those people that need services and connecting those people with services. So, that's part, hopefully, part of the strategic plan. The other thing as far as the cultural groups, want to again highlight, while you're having those discussions with all those groups, highlight the opportunity to have events highlighting their different cultures, like a luau and other opportunities. Night markets are great for the Asian community. A lot of other, there's a lot of other events that I'd love to be having to share with everyone, the amazing cultures from around the world that we have here in Mount Lake Terrace. So, those are the highlights, but I'm just really anxious to see the plan and get started on adopting the plan and implementing it. So, thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thanks. All right. Well, all I want to say is that I can't believe that we're doing this, that we're actually doing this, and then we've come this far. I was really impressed with the sessions that we had to go to, that we had to go to. But it was great to go to, and what more can I say? We're a city that's actually doing this. Lots of cities are still, they still have their heads in the sand. So, thank you so much for getting this started, and we'll just continue on. All right. So, next is the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, a couple of things to share with you tonight. First, as I'm sure many of you will mention, but the light rail opening last Friday was a fantastic event. There was an astounding number of people there. I did not expect the number of people that we had, but it was amazing. It was, I expected it to be busy. I didn't expect it to be that packed. It was a lot of fun, and I think everybody had a good time. Everybody that I interacted with was smiling and looked like they were excited and were having a fantastic time. So, it was, it was a lot of fun. On the, wanted to remind you, I'm sure you're all looking forward to it, that at your next meeting on the 12th, you'll have first chance for review at the comprehensive plan, and first of many, along with the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So, we have both those presentations ready for you next week, week from tonight. Next item, I wanted to thank our partners at Ace Hardware. Ace Hardware donated shovels, rakes, gloves, and weeding tools to our Parks Department for our volunteer activities. So, that's great to have, and very happy to see that, and want to say thank you to our partners in the community for that donation. Also, another local business highlight, Bagoose, was featured on King Five recently, and I hope many of you saw that. It was, it was a good feature. I thought a lot of good information, and highlighted Mount Lake Terrace. So, that was fantastic as well. Next, a couple of project updates, just real quickly. First, on the Safe Routes to School Project, everything's going very smoothly. If you've driven through that intersection lately, the removal of the vegetation and the upgrades to the curb, the sightlines have been improved significantly, making sure, doing our best to make sure that intersection is a lot more safe for kids on their way to school, but all pedestrians, really, making our city more walkable. One small setback is that the rapid flashing beacon that's supposed to be a part of that project cannot be shipped to us until October. So, like many of the materials we found, another example would be the HVAC units for the police department. That was a four-and-a-half-month lead time. So, that's another, it's another one of those things where the units just aren't available, and we have to wait for them to be manufactured and then shipped to us. But it's on its way, and even without those flashing beacons, that intersection is markedly improved. So, lastly, I wanted to give a big thanks to our Public Works crews. Many of you probably saw that there was a water leak on 58th the other, what? Two days ago? Maybe it was yesterday. But water leak, and wanted to bring, and I will bring at a future meeting, a little piece of pipe to show you the damage that a water leak can do, a pinhole leak basically ate through an entire fitting. So, wanted to show you that piece of pipe, and I'll, like I said, bring that to a future meeting. But our Public Works crews did an outstanding job. They were out on the scene immediately. They got it fixed and ready for rush hour by 4:30. So, a little more than two hours on it and got it fixed, and it's fantastic. And I just wanted to say thank you to them. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Two questions. One for the donation from Ace Hardware, which is awesome. Thank you to them. Are we using those for National Day of Service? Are we, I know we've got a meeting between now and then, but it's pretty close to that. So, I just, maybe you could highlight that for all of us who should probably put it on our calendars.
Yeah, National Day of Service, and I'm sure those tools will be in use. Lake Ballenger on the 14th of this month, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, I believe. Lots of opportunity for community engagement and help us with the park, which already looks fantastic with, most of it looks fantastic with the Army Corps project in Hall Creek. So, making sure we take care of that space and have tools for the people that love to volunteer for their community and available for their use.
Awesome. Thank you. And then the other question I had was around the night market, and a question versus my report on it. Do we have a list of the vendors from that event? There were so many amazing local businesses, you know, and I had a chance to go visit them, but like also didn't have as much time as I probably would have liked. Do we have a list that we can refer to for that?
Yeah. So, I'm talking with the chamber representative tomorrow afternoon, and I will make sure to get that. I believe we do have it, but I want to make sure, and as soon as I have it, I will forward it to all of you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to build off of Councilmember Murray's point about the 14th. First, I want to point out it's not on the calendar, which would help the actual calendar. At least if it is, I don't see it on mine. So, that's an easy fix. But the bigger one is to step back and say, first and foremost, go dogs, because that day will be your first re-envision of apple cup at 12:30. So, curious whether or not we could chime that in here, pipe that in. I'm not even joking. And turn it into, more people show up, and then let's have a community, let's re-envision the apple cup, because usually it's at the end of the year, and now it's literally like third game? What the heck? So, just putting that out there, that is a wonderful opportunity to maybe build community because there are a lot of cougars around here, too. Stop messing with my cats, by the way. No, those are coyotes, aren't they? But nonetheless, on the serious reel here, just trying to see if we can't maybe put Andrew on this. Andrew's a dog. He'll get it done, but figure out something to tie those two together. That's my suggestion.
I will see what we can do. I am always up for streaming a football game.
All right. Anyone else? Well, I'm just going to say that Ace Hardware, behind the scenes, do a lot of things for the community, and we probably should get to know them because, and give a shout-out to them every time they do something because they also donated the cart to, what's his name? Doug Jensen?
Yes.
And little things like that throughout the year, they're just always giving. So, let's kind of keep them in mind a lot more. All right. Thank you. So, next is the council liaison reports, and it's going to be a long one because we also missed the last meeting. So, it's going to be like a month, a month of reports again, sort of. Where should I start? Let's start in the middle. With Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will start, think back on August, August 7th. I attended the AHA Joint Board Meeting and had some really robust conversation about, you know, a lot of the work around Snoomish County that's going on at the local government level with housing planning, how we, you know, as we're all updating our comprehensive plans, get better data and get, you know, adopt a mindset that, you know, as we're looking at housing for those who are earning zero to 30% of AMI or area median income and so on, as the state's now requiring local governments to do, we have some better, you know, tools in the toolbox to do that. And Chris Collier, as we all know, staffing that group, is thankfully on our comprehensive plan advisory board, group, whatever we're calling it, CPAG. But I just really appreciate Chris and our county panel at AHA for having some robust and honest conversations there about the dire need that we have to build and to, you know, provide more affordable housing for everyone in our community. Because, you know, I see people, you know, I live a block away, and walking here, I saw someone, you know, living in their car. You know, it is everywhere around us, and can't say, can't put a finer point on the sort of moral imperative for us to make housing more available and more affordable to everyone. Anyway, moving along, on the next day, on August 8th, I attended our council work session. On the 14th, I played first base and, I believe, shortstop at our softball game, our friendly against City of Edmonds. And while I had one RBI, we still came up short, pretty, pretty short in that game. So, I enjoyed the chance to play some friendly softball with our staff and our, against our neighbors to the west. And on the 22nd, our city manager and I had our check-in meeting. And that sort of brings me to the Week of Light Rail on the 27th. Got to see all y'all on the preview ride and celebrate the monumental, or the completion of this monumental mega project that serves our community now. And that was followed by the aforementioned night market and all the other celebrations on the 30th, which, you know, as someone who voted on Sound Transit 2, I think maybe my second election after coming to voting age to see it finally, you know, come to fruition and build and ride it is beyond exciting. So, it was really great to see up and down the... So it was, it was really great to see up and down the, the light rail line, the, the level of participation, excitement and energy. And it really gave me, well, made me think about the, the potential of to do, to do more in, in that space. And I'm, I'm excited for the, the coming years as we build out our infrastructure to bring, bring, you know, folks down to the, the station. And also makes, makes me wonder why we can't have a, a party like that every month. So with, with that, I'll, I'll end my, my report. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm going to now go to Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. In August, also the eighth work-study session. And on the 13th, attended my Left One Retirement Commission. And the 20th, the Arts Commission, which is working on their art show coming up. So in your calendars, the art show is Saturday through Saturday. It's 21st of September to 28th September. And then for those that have been accepted and got awarded into the show, because it is a juried art show, that will be a preview night for us on, and the award winners 20th, Friday night at September 20th at 6:30 here in City Hall. So that will be here at 6:30 and probably be done by 7:00. And then we'll go over and take a look at the artwork in the library. And then the show will be open to the public the 21st through the 28th. And usually those are the library hours. So if you need the hours, it's when the library's open. Then on the 27th, I also attended our light rail preview run. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Back on August 8th, I also attended our work session. On the 21st of August, we had our monthly Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission meeting. It was a good meeting. We had Laura Reed come and talk about some of the engagement. Sorry, guys. All right. Laura Reed, our Stormwater Program Manager, came and met with the commission about some of the engagement work that we are looking to do as a city around our urban forest management plan. So that was great and appreciate that our city staff continues to, to work with our DEI commission around engagement. We talked, they have a ton of stuff coming up, a little bit that we've already talked about, Welcoming Week. I know we have on our calendars, but it's the 21st of this month. It's a resource fair that the DEI commission spearheaded and we're partnering with the Edmunds School District. It is going to be at Terrace Park Elementary School here in Mount Lake Terrace, right up on 228th, right next to the rec pavilion. And it is, it's going to be a resource fair with opportunities to connect the community, you know, with one another, with information, with resources. And so hope you can join us for that. I think if I didn't already say, 11 to 2 are the hours on that. What else from that meeting? I think that was the big stuff, along with the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation that we talked about or that we presented here at the beginning of our meeting tonight. Uh, let's see, the 22nd of August, we had a work session. On the 24th, I stopped at the Maverick Back to School Event. Appreciated, that's another one of our local businesses. They were giving away school supplies to folk, to kids in our local community prior to going back to school. And so had a chance to stop by and thank them for their continued work to support our community, which they have been a regular participant in, in terms of back to school and also around Thanksgiving. So thank you to them for both the work that they do as well as inviting us to, to join them. The preview ride of light rail on the 27th, as well as the light rail opening day on the 30th was amazing. And they could fangirl out all day about how wonderful light rail is, particularly as somebody who has spent a number of years commuting to downtown Seattle for work. Grateful for both, you know, the ease that, that will provide for folks who are regular commuters in our community, which is a significant portion of the population. I think we heard at one of, in one of the speeches, that Snohomish County has the highest commuter workforce in the state. And so finding ways to do that, that don't require a vehicle or don't require getting in a vehicle and don't require sitting in traffic, which if you're anything like me, when you sit in traffic for an hour and a half some days to just go, you know, 15 miles, you end up very frustrated by the time you get to where you're going. Whereas when you take light rail, you get there, like listen to some music, maybe do some work, you know, and get there in a much better mood. Or at least that, that's my general philosophy on it. So it was wonderful, though. I was going to say, I've already heard so many great stories, you know, from people that have used it for work, for pleasure, for, you know, just going on adventures, recreation. And so, you know, I just, it's exciting. My kids and I hopped on, you know, the first day and went and had lunch in the U District, which was fabulous. It opens up a whole new world in terms of things that are easy to access and do. The very first ride that we went on when it first opened that day, I saw somebody who was in their Lumen Field uniform, who was getting on the light rail to go down to work, you know, and caught that very first light rail down, down to his job. And so it was just, it was a really, the atmosphere and the excitement and the different ways that that project, you know, will positively benefit those in our community is just incredibly exciting. And I appreciate all of the people, the many, many people over many, many years who have put in time and energy and resources to, to bring that to fruition. It is super exciting and big shout out to our Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce for our night market. It was phenomenal. The energy there was great. And I think the comment about potentially having those sorts of things come back more often, I, I would absolutely second that. It was clear even as things were shutting down here at, I think they went, went from four to eight and even at eight o'clock, people were still milling around and enjoying themselves and, and, you know, so I think there's a lot of enthusiasm there and hope to, hope to see more of those sorts of things as we move forward. Since summer's coming to an end, I will just say generally, summer movies and music was also awesome, I think, in terms of opportunities for our community to celebrate and come together and connect. The expansion of that this year and our investment in that, I think, paid huge dividends. And I heard lots of positive feedback from our community about both our enjoyment and their appreciation for those opportunities. So thank you to all of the city staff and particularly Andrew for, for making those happen. We talked about Welcoming Week already. My only other plug would be kids are back in school this week. So don't forget as you're driving around town to, to be on the lookout and make sure that you're paying attention to those school speed zones. While we don't have cameras, you may have seen that Edmunds does around their schools. So definitely be aware as you, you know, head out of Mount Lake Terrace, but even within Mount Lake Terrace, those, those school zones are in effect. And so definitely make sure you're paying attention so that everybody can get safely to where they need to go. And I think that completes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll go to Councilmember Sonmore.
I attended R-PAC for the month of August and we did talk about the Urban Forest Management Plan with Laura Reed as well. And we talked about the, I, I think there's going to have to be a lot of work that goes into that. I understand, I'll, I'll get into it more later, but we had a conversation at R-PAC about who's going to be responsible for keeping up all the trees. And it, and the way we're going and the way our comp plan has allowed us to build, I think the city will be on the hook for maintaining a lot of the trees, especially in the park because of the way that we're losing trees. And we also talked about the 2024 work plan in the tree board. And we are going to be planting trees, I believe in October in various parks. But we did have trees removed in Evergreen Jacklong and Terrace Creek and a couple of trees have fallen in Jacklong. And we talked about how expensive it is to remove a tree, especially the cost to the cities and to homeowners and what that's going to look like in the future. I also attended Left One Board Meeting, which is one of my boards, and also had my August City Manager Monthly Meeting and very happy to ride the light rail. I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback, so I just hope it keeps that way and people thoroughly enjoy it. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. So I suspect all the council members before me are going to want to modify their record, which is to say on the 6th, we, I attended the National Night Out. I once again missed a chance to get a photo with Smokey, but I hope those of you who were able to, were able to get a good photo with him. He looks forward to coming back, I've heard. On the 8th, I had my one-on-one with our awesome city manager. I always appreciate those candid conversations and the scary parts of the conversations I could do without, but that's how the city is run and I do appreciate him and our deputy city manager, the stuff they probably shield us from, is probably the easier way to say that, but take on a day-to-day basis. I really appreciate the both of you. Moving forward, I too was at the 8th, the study session. Then I'll jump an entire week. Oh, you're lucky. On the 17th, I had the opportunity, it was, I don't know if you believe in these things or not, but it was nonprofit day, National Nonprofit Day. Totally a coincidence, I would have done this no matter what, which is to say I visited five different events. Now, before I run through those five events, know that this ties back to something that we've done and actually we just witnessed as well, this idea of a welcoming committee, or excuse me, Welcoming Week, which is when we did our ribbon cutting at Trax, beautiful facility, looking forward to the community growing down there. We stepped out to take a photo and no one needs to know the true backstory, but know that I ended up meeting one of their residents who loves it here, but moves back and forth. So he isn't actually here a lot, but is getting his sea legs under him when he is here and just loves the city. So he hung out with me the entire time. And that's just my way of saying, we never would have met, or if we would have, it would have been a long time from now. But we met because he happened to stand outside of his building as all of us came out to take this photo to welcome in that community. And that's not a kudos to Steve, it was just one of those things where I'm sure we have examples of that. And just, you know, again, kudos to our DEI, the members who are still here, but all of you. You're just doing wonderful work. I think you're pushing us to be better stewards of this responsibility and then people are responding accordingly. I mean, genuinely, he was like, you're a council member, I want to hang out with you. Felt like I was a rock star all day, which I am a rock star, which is a different discussion for a different day. That said, the five events, all centered around community building or resources and/or both. So I want to start with Arlington. We started off in Arlington, wonderful backpack giveaway up there for that community. One of the lower socioeconomic resources, or excuse me, population, dense populations here in our county. So just to be up there was amazing. As if that wasn't enough, we moved over to the Mariner Fest, put on by Snow Isle Live Prayer. And if you don't know much about Mariner, you want to talk about true lack of resources. So just kudos to the work that the Snow Isle is doing out there, wonderful partners just in general, but they're really doing amazing work. And theirs too was a, a resource and backpack giveaway. I'd also up in Everett, and I might get this one wrong, so I'm going to actually disassociate it with Pastor Darby as well, the Darbys, the two of them, as well as Minister J.J. Franks, which I believe they're the Bible Way Church of God and Christ. They put on a block party. And this is just an example, and I absolutely know we have probably examples of this in our own neighborhood, so thank you for calling out the businesses, but I suspect our churches do this as well, which is they didn't wait for the city or they didn't wait for another nonprofit. They themselves said, we're going to do this for our community, whether they're members of our church or not. They got permits to shut, shut down the street and do a genuine block party and it looked just as awesome as all the other ones, which is just encouraging people to get involved. It actually made me think of our tennis courts over here when they came and visited us. I bet they have done something just like that, that we have missed, which again, and the idea of celebrating folks, that you've been hearing echoed up and down, that'd be something for us to think about as well. Moving forward, made it to Sounds of Africa. That was actually in Everett. Just wonderful to have a presence there nonetheless. That was the Wawa Center, West African, or the Washington West African Center here in Linwood, but they did their event up in Everett, but nonetheless was a beautiful event. And then speaking of luos, we had the honor of doing the luau. I was there for sure with the mayor. I apologize if others were there and blanking on it now, but we were up on stage, I think I'd remember if you were there. But nonetheless, that was awesome, just having a chance to say, hey, you know, Linwood, this is awesome, but, you know, your cousins right down the street would love to be here as well. And now with that leaked light rail opening up, perhaps we can make a bigger concerted effort to get a lot more of us out there. I'll just power through the rest of these, which is on the 21st, and this has been the spirit of folks wanting to know what our council members do outside of this job. I had the opportunity to keynote for Liberty Road Foundation. Their goal is to transform the business community through Christ, but really connecting their profits with nonprofits to do better work in the community. So I was an honor to get a chance to speak with them. On the 22nd, I was at our study session again. On the 24th, and I'm only bringing this one up because I genuinely stood in the rain for six hours to do this, which is the Monroe Fair Days. Monroe Fair Days for our Everett, or excuse me, our Evergreen State Fair, the Monroe does a parade and we were able to do that. And it was a miserable day of liquid sunshine. But it was a wonderful event, again, just an opportunity to be out there and amongst the peoples, as they say. But kudos to everybody who stood in that rain and watched the parade go by. I too was on the elected official ride on the 27th with light rail. I think everybody knows I'm a super fan of light rail. So that's also to say, yes, I was in fact there on the 30th when we opened, but surprisingly, I passed up on the opportunity to be there at the actual ribbon cutting. That's just to remind us that we also have entered into Behavioral Health Month and I had a social anxiety. I couldn't do it. So I actually stayed home and instead I cleaned the gutters, part of our adopted drain. And that felt way better for me and I'm glad I did that because it sure as hell had all of you up on there and it's just too many eyes. And so powerful moment for those of you who made it and for whatever reason who couldn't and more importantly, for anybody who's privately battling, I hope me admitting my own issue gives you the space to do the same. Again, we have entered into Behavioral Health Month of September. I'll round that out without crying, maybe, with, had the honor of welcoming back our awesome teaching staff of the Edmunds School District, which is the foundation for Edmunds School District. We had an opportunity to share, or excuse me, give out awards of teachers who are just doing amazing work with our students. So although we have heard how sad and how painful and how just incredibly difficult this summer has been, that teaching force that started back is ready to rock and roll and get these students back on track moving forward. So more power to them. And I will actually leave on a powerful note of thank you to Sound Transit. I am a middle child. And if any middle child in here knows what that means, it means nobody's listening to you. So I can say whatever I want. It's the best part of microphones. Nobody's listening. You're a middle child. That said, when Eric came through for Sound Transit, he listened to my idea about, hey, why don't you invite those mascots up? And not only did I see Blitz, I didn't actually see them because that's a longer story, but I did see photos of Blitz as well as our Mariner Moose, and I was told a lot more of the mascots were here. So thank you to Sound Transit for taking, which sometimes sounds like a crazy idea, go dogs, I'm telling you, we got to do the apple cup. It's little things like that that actually build community and I hope it made somebody's day. Didn't save the world, but I sure as heck hope it made somebody's day. End of my report. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. So going back to what, August 2nd?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. On August 2nd, had the Snohomish County Cities Executive Board Meeting, following up on our last dinner and looking forward to our future dinners and also talking about the SCT, SEC and how to interact with the, the two organizations. Sorry, Snohomish County Tomorrow and Snohomish County Cities, two organizations. On the 6th, had the South Snohomish County Council Presidents and Mayors Protem Meeting and then National Night Out. On the 7th, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Executive Committee Meeting, followed with the 8th, our council work session. I know I'm missing a few things in here that didn't get added to this calendar, but I do know PSRC did not have any meetings in August, so you don't have to listen to me go on about those meetings. Had the work session, had the light rail line preview ride on the 27th, followed by the Washington Transportation Coalition Reception, celebrating opening of light rail in Snohomish County. On the 28th, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee Meeting. On the 30th, had the light rail grand opening and ribbon cutting. On the 30th, had Light Rail Grand Opening and ribbon cutting at 11:00 and then the afternoon, night markets. This is what I've been saying, they're gonna be popular, we need to do more of them, so let's find a way. All right, so then on the, oh, Yay Sound Transit Grand Opening in Snohomish County and really excited to have that. We've talked a lot about that in the past, everybody else has talked about it, I won't go into detail, just excited to have them and what kind of opportunities that brings to everybody here in this city. All right, then on the, oh, on the 3rd, had the Snohomish County Council Presidents and Mayors Pro Tem Meeting. On the 4th, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Executive Committee Meeting and today had the, our, the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem with the city manager and our council meeting. All right, I think that wraps it up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So for my report, we'll go back to August 6th, National Night Out. It's online and what a great event. It just, it just continues to be a good event and I'm really, really proud of our city for putting that on. And on the 7th, I attended the Executive and Mayor's Meeting, County Executive and Mayor's Meeting, it's, it's an online meeting. And then after that, right after that, we got on to the Snohomish County Mayor's Meeting, which was thankfully also on Zoom. And then later on in the afternoon, I attended the AHA Meeting, the Affordable Housing And on the 12th of August, I stopped in to see what was going on over at the Comp Plan Public Input and I'm, I'm just so happy that people are, are actually showing up to these open houses and putting in their two cents worth. So we've come a long ways. Oh, on the 17th, I attended the Linwood Luau and I guess we should talk about the Hawaiian t-shirt, Hawaiian shirt contest that we, there were so many judges, all our elected officials over there got on stage and were judging these and I have no idea how we got to pick the winners because it just went so fast. And then on the 19th of August, I, backing up a little bit, the Snohomish County, South Snohomish County Mayors talked about, how do we get housing built? How do we get housing and so on? And so the Mayor of Mill Creek, who is a past president of Master Builders, Brian Horsclaw and myself, past president of the Realtors, decided that we would go to ESAC, Economic Alliance of Snohomish County and just kind of say, hey, we've got this idea, what do you think? And they loved it, so they met with us and we'll see what happens because it's probably gonna be an ongoing workshop next year. And then on the 22nd, I attended the opening of the Evergreen State Fair because I'm on the, I'm on a board over there and, and so we get lunch. We get lunch and we get to go to the opening ceremonies and, and then I got to see the cows and the goats and the cats. On the 27th, I attended the Preview Ride for Light Rail and I am just, I can't tell you how happy I was, so proud I was to have all seven Mount Lake Terrace Council Members there so we could have our photo taken and yeah, it, it just, I can't say how much it meant to me. And then, right after that, I attended, well, there was a reception over at Zeke's and I heard later people talking about, did you know there's a Zeke's in Mount Lake Terrace? We need to do more of this and invite the elected officials over to some of our other places because they had no idea that there was anything down in that hole, which is Terror Station. I mean, we've got to find ways of getting people into our city. The, and then I also went to the chambers, the Mount Lake Terrace Chamber at Gate and Thai where they're talking about the opening of the night, the night market. And then on the 29th of August, I attended the Economic Alliance's Summer Networking over in Lake Stevens and, let's see, I had not been to Lake Stevens in years. Could not believe how long a drive that was. I used to go to Lake Stevens all the time and it didn't seem that far away back then. That's true. Let's see, and then on the 30th was the Light Row Ribbon Cutting and the Night Market and wow, that, that was really, really an event. I just, I just cannot say more about it because it's, I did not see anybody there from our council because they, they had me going through this and that and they kept pushing, pulling me to these other little things and so I, and I kinda wondered if anyone else showed up and then I found out later that you all had come. And then, let's see, on the 4th, I attended Conservation Futures Meeting and, and someone there asked me, I thought that Mount Lake Terrace was gonna put in for something and, because I had mentioned it last year. Well, told them we were gonna be working on it so that, we, we gave all the money away. There, there was, I think we had 7.8 million and we gave away 7.3 million. So all, everybody who asked for money got it. Let's, let's get a, well, it, it's, I want to get a park in Melody Hill, so let's work on it. Then, oh, earlier that day, I attended the Snohomish County Mayor's Lunch in Mill Creek and, and then today I attended the Community Transit Meeting and then found out that people are hearing stories from everybody and somebody was on, on the Light Rail and they were standing next to some people and they found out that these two people riding Light Rail that day going north had never been to Snohomish County. And they wanted to go to the mall. So this is big. Whenever our Mayor Pro Tem talks about night markets and says, they're all over Asia and then, I don't know why it took me this long, but the last day or so, I just realized, all the matsuri, the festivals that I went to in Japan at night, that's the night market. It just, we just called it matsuri over there. Right. And so no, I know exactly what those are because I went to many of them. And then to follow up on, on Councilmember Woodard's thing, I clean, I actually did clean both the drains that I, that I adopted because even though the whole thing wasn't covered, enough of it was covered this time and caked on and I looked at it thinking, I didn't see it caked on before, I've never had to do that, but this time it was and so I spent a few minutes banging the thing and getting it all cleared. So I, I got two drains cleared. That's the end of my report. It's, for those of you, it, it was a months-long report. Normally it's only two weeks for everybody and Light Rail happened. So then, next on our agenda is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, actually, it's not really new business, it's revisiting old business, which is really, unfortunately, one just walked out. I wanna say thank you to all the Mount Lake Terrace residents who took a chance and said, hey, I'm gonna show up as I show up in the world and do this photo shoot with Sound Transit and see what happens. Well, what's happened is that we have Mount Lake Terrace on all four of those stations in many prominent places. That includes our librarian, many of our commissioners, I saw our Arts Commissioner, our DEI, I wanna say RPAC and so there was just, again, everyday residents as well. Again, just saying thank you, again, to the spirit of it makes a difference. Yes, our deputy city manager found her on her bike around a pillar in Linwood. Again, there's so many people, not to mention other folks, I'm sure we all know people up there that represent other cities, but just what a difference that makes. And the mayor and I, we showed up on a placard or, excuse me, a kind of a wall thing saying thank you, but just a reminder that that's coming from all of this council, so when you pointed out all seven of us were there, I too wanna acknowledge, thank you all for taking the time. I have a job that makes it easy to show up sometimes, but I know that's really difficult for many of you to take time out and I genuinely know that this has changed how this part of the world's gonna be interacting with each other, so what an awesome time to be on the council.
Anyone else? Well, I, I just wanna mention that we, we had someone get married. So congratulations, Councilmember Rory Payne Donovan, you're now a married man.
Thank you.
And let's see, there was one more, oh, you know, I'm gonna just hold off on these until the next one because we've had a long meeting. What? Well, I, so if I can just mention this then, it's, 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 it came up on the, the Facebook community page that the site, the crosswalk at 224th and 50, 56, apparently is very, very dangerous and there's been a lot of close calls and so forth and I don't know what we can do, there's, there's a striping in there, but maybe we can look at it a little bit further. There were a lot of people chiming in on that one and some of, some of the things that they wrote about were pretty scary and I don't wanna see anybody get hurt. So that's one and, and the, 216th and 48th, the Safe Routes for School, I, I just, I can't believe that after all these years, we're finally gonna have a safe, that was another problem corner with a lot of accidents and near miss accidents and now we're getting that taken care of and I just, I really, I'm a little surprised that, at what is being done because it's more than I expected and then it, but I thought that we were gonna have parking on this side, we're not. But they extended, extended the sidewalks all, all the way, even on sections that I didn't even say that we needed sidewalks there. I am so impressed, so that's all I have. Does anyone have anything else? Otherwise, I can just adjourn the meeting or adjourn.